...
The time is four minutes after seven on March seventeenth, twenty fifteen. Hold the city council order. Call please.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Here.
Wyatt?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Mathela?
Here.
Dambino?
Here.
Grant?
Here.
Thank you. Item three, approve the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of both the executive session and regular meeting of March third, twenty fifteen.
Second, hold please.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathela?
Yes.
Dambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Aye.
Fisher Brown, your turn in the public speaking. Some of us are already tired.
Two minutes into the meeting. It's hard. Okay.
Special orders.
Any special orders? What do we have on special orders?
We don't have anything on the agenda for special orders tonight.
On to the reports of officers, boards, or standing committees. What do we have with that? You have anything to add?
Nothing.
Nothing. Not going. Steve?
I was reading something that reminded me to ask this question. Is this, if we're on a committee like the local public consul for safety, are we supposed to report on those meetings when we have them? Is that, is this the time to do that?
Yeah, it would be. If you have something.
All I wanted to say is that the next meeting is March twenty-seventh, and the chair of the committee and Commissioner Hall has agreed to put mental health on the agenda for that meeting, and so I wanted to share that with the consul. That is an agenda that-
On our next council?
As a result of the action that we took here in Depot Bay on this consul and my request to put it on their agenda, that's what we did.
Then it will be the agenda for the twenty-seventh?
Oh, I believe Lincoln County puts those-
They put it out.
Yes, Lincoln County puts those.
It's for the advisory committee for safety. Steve's a member of that.
Okay, so that, it's a local consul for public safety.
Yeah.
But that will automatically be on the agenda, is that true?
On their agenda?
Their agenda, it will be. So I don't know what, I'm just sharing with the consul that as a result of our work here and my request-
Oh, I see, I see.
So I don't know what else we need to do about that. Sorry, that was confused, was that confusing? Sorry.
Not really. But if it needs to be on our next council's agenda, it will be on-
Because I can report on it then. I can report on it the next-
Yeah, great.
Right? So there you go. Now I get it right. I'm still learning.
On to the publicly comments. Do we have anybody from our public who'd like to participate? Okay. On to unfinished business.
You did it all.
Holy cow. It's gonna be a little hurt. New business. Depot Bay Chamber of Commerce requests for authorization to use City facilities for wooden boat show and craft feed. There she is.
Hi, guys. Hello. I'm Richard Schreier, the secretary and the Depot Bay Chamber, one forty-two South East Side Avenue, and I am already, um, we put in a request for the boat show, for the use of the harbor parking lots, and the harbor master to clear dock four for the boat show, which is April eighteenth and nineteenth. I will put in that request for it.
So?
Very quickly, if I might butt in, it doesn't appear to me that there's any change to the chamber's request for the use of the docks and the facilities, waiver of more HPs for exhibitors, keeping restrooms open, setting up the sink outside the community hall. I wasn't familiar with the three steps for windows.
Well, that is, yeah. I got that. That's on our stage.
That's for example.
It's the steps for us.
Okay, so I think, and we just confirmed, that this is the same requested items, city staff helping out, and we say waiver of more HPs for exhibitors, so if the consul is ready to approve that, it would be a motion to close that, those facilities for this event, and allow that staff would be able to perform the duties that would be required.
Yeah, and I'll make sure that that line is jetted. It's on the utility crews list right now to make sure that that's, so we don't have it back.
Give it to the governor, go ahead.
Yes, Dray, yeah, yeah. It scours the grain with-
That's about two hundred percent.
All right, do we have a motion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we close the facilities, allow the Chamber of Commerce to run the wooden boat show and craft feed on, what's that, April eighteenth and nineteenth.
Second, call please.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathela?
Yes.
Dambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Thank you. You want my grant that was received? They also have an OLCC special event license, and some of you might be familiar with the City Council job relating to OLCC licenses, and some of you may not, but we've all got a copy of the application for temporary use of an annual license, and this is specific to the craft feed boat show dates down at the community hall. There is a section at the very end of the second page where it says city or county use only, so the city council will review the application, and Suzanne is here today to answer any questions in the town, and then you will move to recommend to either grant or deny the OLCC permits for the event. So, hold your talk.
Good evening, my name is Suzanne Schreier, because I'm a new Depot Bay Chamber board member. One of the projects that I've been tasked with with the craft feed and wooden boat show is to secure a more economical way to still be able to serve beer and wine to visitors without having the chamber need to assume a responsibility for the insurance, for the OLCC permits. It's been my understanding that in previous years when the chamber has done the service themselves, that it's probably been close to break even if not a loss for the chamber. So we partnered with Roadhouse One-O-One, it's Whitehead Enterprises out of Salem, but they own Roadhouse One-O-One and Rusty Truck Brewing in Lincoln City. They have a mobile truck that converts into a serving facility. They've agreed to provide the service for us at no charge. They would charge the patrons for the sales and in turn give a donation back to the Depot Bay Chamber of Commerce for allowing them the exposure. All of their staff is car carrying, servers permit holders, they know how to check for ID, they know how to look for any problems with that. I myself hold a server's license and would be the point person at the event in addition to their staff. The way we see it, it's kind of a great way for us to get a donation back to the chamber and it's great exposure for our local brewery as well.
So you can check all the IDs?
They actually are responsible because they're the ones that are selling. We're not, the Depot Bay Chamber is not the ones that is selling the beer, Rusty Truck is. So they will have their ID checkers at the point of sale out of what they call a distribution truck.
That business would be Roadhouse One-O-One then?
Correct.
That's what we, what we have there.
It's Roadhouse One-O-One because Roadhouse One-O-One has the permanent OLCC license, and Rusty Truck does their service, which is, it's part of the same company, all under Whitehead Enterprises.
All right.
Yes, ma'am? I have two questions. Should I start with one? And then let somebody else come in here? My first question would be, you contacted them, did you contact anybody else other than Roadhouse One-O-One?
I did not. Reason being is we know that they have a mobile unit that would work in a space that we have to work with at the community hall.
Okay. And my second question, and I don't know if it's appropriate, but what percent do you all give that?
We don't know yet. We've got it set up at this point as a modest donation. They know our target goal, which may sound a little lofty, but our target goal is a five hundred dollar fundraiser for the chamber.
Okay.
On the liquor sales themselves?
On the beer and wine sales.
Really? I just, I have no issue with that, I'm just, I didn't know you could enter into a contract and give money back at an OLCC event. Just a question. Is it okay?
Yes, it is. And they assume, they assume all of the responsibility for that. It does, it has nothing to do with any kind of chamber function.
Yes, ma'am? I believe Whitehead Enterprises is, it's a law firm, isn't it?
Brian Whitehead is the owner, he, his offices, primary offices are in Salem.
Okay.
And then he's on the coast, typically on Saturdays and Sundays.
That could be fun.
Any other questions?
Mr. Grant? Yes. So, excuse me, I didn't write your name down.
That's okay, Suzanne Schreier.
Suzanne, did you say?
Yes, sir.
Have we now?
We have not.
Okay. Suzanne, my name's Jerome Grant. And so in previous years, and how long have you been with the Chamber?
I just started this year.
Okay, and how long have you been a Depot Bay resident?
I actually don't live in Depot Bay, I live in Newport. Working in Lincoln City, living on Enigma Beach.
So, this, I don't want to get too far in that, but why, when did you join the Depot Bay Chamber?
I was asked by the president of the Chamber, who I've had quite a few dealings with on a business standpoint, if I was interested. I've volunteered at several of the Depot Bay events in the past.
Okay, so that would be, who's the Depot Bay?
Dorinda Goddard.
Okay. Now, in previous years, the Chamber has posted the liquor sales themselves, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
That's my understanding, yes.
No.
That's not?
It's not liquor, spirit wine.
Spirits.
I understand. They haven't, it's been the Chamber themselves that has got the signature license, is that right?
Yes, yes.
Special event license?
We had to do all the licensing, we had to pay the city, all the city fees, we had to pay all the OLCC fees, we had to do all of the licensing and everything, we had to do the purchasing of the beer, and the, and the other one.
And, and did you, did you dispense that beverage from inside the community hall?
Yes, we did have people that were, I am a card holder, an OLCC card holder, so last year I was in charge of the craft feed, and last year I was the one who was responsible for the beer, for the liquor sales, and we have people that are signed up on the OLCC forums, and they are the servers, we also have alcohol watchers, they're alcohol, if you call it so.
You mean right now or in previous years?
In previous years.
That's, I'm sorry, mayor, to establish decorum on interacting with the public themselves, so permission for-
Well, you have that right, because that's what we're discussing.
Okay, right. So, so now, are you saying that now, in this, this year, you're outsourcing your liquor sets, basically? By liquor, I mean either beer or wine.
Beer and wine.
And, and are, is the liquor going to be dispensed inside the community hall or outside the community hall?
Outside in a vehicle that is converted to serve from.
Okay.
I apologize, I don't have a picture of it.
That's okay.
There's a map.
Yeah, I've seen it before.
Okay.
It's got a couple tabs inside.
And, and, but not inside the community hall, there's not going to be beer and wine inside the community, only outside?
They will be permanent.
Okay. Fine, thank you.
Look.
Yep.
Call please.
I have one question, did, and I can address it to you, did you guys make less than five hundred dollars last year?
Last year, the profits that we made by the time we got them-
For the liquor?
Paying all of the fees, the licensing, the insurance, because our, our special event liquor insurance went, went up sky high last year, and so by the time we got done with all our expenses, we made like forty dollars, our tip jar made forty-two.
Okay.
So that was, that was our profit last year was the forty dollars that we made out of the tip jar. Actually, it was kind of humorous, that kind of worked out that way. So, we're treating it more as a service to the, to the public than it was actually as any profits coming in.
Okay.
So this year, we decided because of the insurance issue, we would try to do it a different way that would benefit, you know, the chamber since it is a fundraiser.
Right.
All right, that being said, literally, the question is, I know which truck you're talking about, are we going to have that truck behind the community hall in a, an area that's cordoned off so then we can legally do that?
Yes. It'll be, I think everybody has a comp of how we have it basically set up, if we bring it up there.
Right, yeah, I know.
Yeah, so it'll be, there's two tents that are set up right here, right just beyond the patio area, and then this will be set up just right next to those tents in that confined area.
Okay. Once somebody asks anything else, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we support approve the application for temporary use of an annual license to the OLCC for the, what you did.
And I'll say it then.
Name and seconded, call please.
Oh, excuse me. Oh, gotcha.
You're open.
Thank you. Could you, could you make that, you said support or approve, which is it going to be? Let's say-
The OLCC forum, actually, the wording is recommends. So the city council recommends to grant, acknowledge, or deny. Those are the choices.
So is that, is that your?
Yeah.
Okay.
Recommended, approved.
Okay.
Is there any more discussion? Call please.
Olson?
No.
Mathela?
Yes.
Dambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Motion.
So the mayor will sign this after the meeting, and then we'll get it to you.
And then I'll present it to the OLCC. Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
John O'Brien, two seven zero Vensel Avenue, Depot Bay, I'm a volunteer with the, the events that go on, the community events. This event is not so much a chamber event as it is a community event, and it's done for the benefit of the city of Depot Bay, and the people in Depot Bay. One of the difficulties that we're having this year is all of the work is done by volunteers, with the exception now of dispensing the beer and wine. We need, if we were to just have people working individual shifts, we would need a hundred people to put on the boat show and craft feed. Many people work double shifts, others just work. The reason I'm bringing this up is it, is asking government, the council, the people in the audience, if you would please encourage friends, relatives, what have you, to volunteer to help out. We have the same people heading up these things year by year, and we are getting older, and some of us are not able to do everything that we used to do when we were not so old. So we do need some help, need a lot of help in the, in the craft feed, in the community hall, serving, crab, cleaning up, taking care of business. So, I just want to make it known that this is really a community event, not a chamber event, although the chamber does run the, takes care of organizing it. It's a community event, yes, ma'am.
My question to you then, if it's, if you state it's a community event, and it's a chamber event, and the donation of the five hundred dollars, where is that going to go?
All that goes back to, in some, one form or another, to the community. Anything that comes into the chamber goes to the community through its kids' own, or supporting other things, the Christmas events and everything.
Steve?
How is your, how is your organization structured? Is it structured as a charity, or how do you govern?
How is the chamber structured?
No. Your organization, if it's a community event, how is it structured? Is it structured as a nonprofit, 501(c)(3)? How is it? How do you govern? And how do you take money and what?
We don't take any money.
Who takes the money?
Volunteers. Don't take, don't do that.
So the fiscal sponsor is the chamber?
Yes. There was I could tell.
I have a suggestion, and I, you know, I, we've had this discussion before. We have a sustainability challenge in our community, and it goes to your concern about aging volunteers and finding new volunteers. My suggestion to put on the table and have a discussion about later on somebody's agenda is to think about creating a foundation or a 501(c)(3) charity in town so that we, we can start to raise money to support these events in the long run, so that we can structure it to effectively manage a volunteer force and to recruit volunteers and have some paid staff that can carry all this forward into the future. I agree with you that an all-volunteer organization is tough to sustain forever, because, and it's tough to find volunteers, so you need to become structured in some way as a nonprofit to be able to accomplish that task, so ten years from now, your grandchildren can still be doing, going to this event.
Yeah.
Sustainability is what I'm thinking about, and what's your, what are your thoughts about doing something like that so we have a future?
That, that may well be possible, but, you know, when I, when you ask about structure, there is no structure, but there are volunteers who are in charge of different things. For example, volunteers, Louise Hayes is the one that's making, she's called the volunteer coordinator, she's making the phone calls and getting people, and this is phone calls off the list from years past, and anybody new that shows up. Her phone number's five four one seven six five four three four eight, I believe. And so she's organized that. My responsibility for this thing is setup, setting up the tents and arranging for all of the logistics that are involved. Other people are responsible for the ducky derby, someone else is responsible for the boat show, getting the exhibitors and all that. So it is set up as a, you know, it's a volunteer operation, and I think maybe downstream it might be worth-
You know what I'm talking about.
It might be worth having, you know, exploring which is-
If this, if this, if this is the legacy of our town, we want to have some way to preserve that legacy, so we need to have some sort of structure that's governed with a board of directors that can manage that process, and that includes everything else we do in this town. I'm very concerned as a city consular, I've been here ten years, I'm over at Neighbors for Kids, I know a lot about nonprofits, and I know a lot about fundraising and sustainability, and I'm telling you that we need to be very serious about structuring ourselves more effectively in the future in this town so that we can preserve the legacy of these events like salmon bake, the boat show, and all the rest of it. We're not doing a very good job, in my opinion, on that right now, we're at risk.
And I don't dispute anything you say.
I'm sorry?
I don't dispute anything that you say.
Okay.
I agree with you, but it's-
We, we need to do something about it, we can't just talk about it, we need to do something about it.
And I understand that.
So how do we do something about it?
I don't know, that's, that's up to the community.
Yeah, John, John's speaking as a volunteer citizen, and as far as putting a responsibility on, I don't think that's really fair.
I agree.
If you, if you'd like to, to write something up that we could discuss at council at another time, then that might be the way to handle it.
And I didn't think, I didn't think he was laying that on me, because-
I wasn't.
If I thought so, I would have told him right off the bat, I'm sorry, I'm not going to.
But you know where I'm coming from.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
On item B of the business, proposed ordinance number three oh two, and ordinance amending ordinance number two forty-three, and ordinance providing for the licensing of businesses, professions, trades, and occupations for revenue purposes, adding regulations for medical marijuana facilities operating within the city of Depot Bay, repealing ordinance number three hundred, declaring moratorium on medical marijuana facilities, and-
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
On item B of the bill, proposed ordinance number 302 and ordinance amending ordinance number 243 and ordinance for licensing of businesses, professions, trades and occupations for revenue purposes, adding regulations for medical marijuana facilities operating within the city of Deepwater Bay, repealing ordinance number 300 declaring a moratorium on medical marijuana facilities and declaring an emergency. That was a thoughtful. What do you have on that?
If I may, Mayor.
Certainly.
I was trying to think if this council has gone through the ordinance adoption process and I think some of you have counted. So very briefly, the ordinance adoption process for the city of Deepwater Bay is outlined in our charter is an ordinance must be presented by two readings to the city council. At each reading, there's an opportunity for public input. So we're going to start that process tonight. And the charter also says that no ordinance shall be adopted unless it's read at the meeting by priority as we begin the process. But it does give the exception and the opportunity for the city council to move to read it by title only, entirely at your discretion. So tonight, we're going to start with presenting for you and starting that adoption process, this ordinance. So you all have had a copy of it. There's been a copy posted. This draft has been reviewed by the city attorney. Our city planner is here tonight to help answer any questions that might come from the audience. So if you would like, we can read it by entirety at each reading or if you would like to only read it by title only at each reading, a motion to do so would be in order. So that's the start of the document.
Do you have a motion to approve? Anybody have a motion to approve? Do you read it by title?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to read this by title only. Is that, is that enough or?
It, it.
I'll second that.
Most of them made and seconded. Is there any more discussion? Call please.
Mathela?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll start with the first reading of proposed ordinance number 302 and ordinance amending ordinance number 243 and ordinance providing for the licensing of businesses, professions, trades and occupations for revenue purposes, adding regulations for medical marijuana facilities operating within the city of Deepwater Bay, repealing ordinance number 300 declaring a moratorium on medical marijuana facilities and declaring an emergency. And at this first reading, is there any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Not hearing any from the audience. If the council would move to approve at the first reading and then, you know, you have your discussion time after that motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
And this is specific to the first reading?
To the first reading.
And I'll second that.
Discussion? Call please.
Oh, we can, we call it, we can discuss. Is that, oh, Mayor, I just want, in case the, the council was wondering about certain wording here at the very, at the, after the semicolon, the last sentence of the reading, declaring an emergency, does, does the council understand that legislative trick? I thought maybe they had a question. And what it does is, is it speeds up the prestige, okay, making it, this, making the ordinance law. And I, I, I particularly don't agree with declaring an emergency in all sorts of legislative issues because our own legislature at the Salem, Oregon virtually declares an emergency on all proposed regulations so that they can, you know, and it just sounds bad, you know, so that they can implement them ASAP without going through a full discussion with the public necessary, necessary. In other words, you know, what might take two or three months could take a year if, or it would come in the big following year, I think, is how it would be. I appreciate any, any help.
If I might add, that for the city of Deepwater Bay, what that means is declaring an emergency means it's effective upon adoption by the city council. If we don't declare an emergency, it's effective 30 days after that date. And that's what that means, just declaring.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for that protocol. Any other discussion? Go ahead.
I.
I'm sorry?
That's all right, no.
Okay. I'm just, the only thing I wanted to say was that, you know, although I think we should, there's no reason why it shouldn't go ahead and be implemented right away and we have given the public every possible opportunity to, you know, give their input on this. I can understand why you don't possibly want to act with caution. So, you know, six of one half a dozen of another to me, I'm just saying, you know, we really, I think we've expended every possible opportunity. So I don't really see that there's any reason to not expedite it. That's just my take.
Robert?
I have kind of two issues. One is actually a typo.
Yes.
In two places. Section out, article one, second sentence, or excuse me, second line, city is officers elected official.
And there's only one of them.
Yeah. So he protected.
Thank you.
So there's two places, it's also in the very next section. And then the other thing is just my two cents for the council. Mostly it was the city board to see what y'all think. And then is I know it's going backwards, I think, to what we originally saw. I just don't feel right by having a business name or entity named in ordinance. In my belief, an ordinance should be generic in form. It should say a school or a facility where children frequent or however we want to word it, but saying Neighbors for Kids, I think, did not mean that.
Go ahead.
I agree with what Robert says in that we're enacting this not just to protect Neighbors for Kids, but any other business that is primarily based on or catering to children, which, you know, in my mind includes daycare facility, you know, upstate ground, you know, anything like that that you, you know, primarily, primarily the main customers are going to be children. Now, that doesn't necessarily include a retail store, for instance, that sells toys or children's clothing, but, you know, for instance, if somebody wanted to apply for a daycare license and they, and they were within that thousand foot circle, we would have to deny them the license because of the fact that they're too close to marijuana businesses. So I don't know if it was considered that. But I do, I do agree with what Robert said about not naming a specific entity.
Steve?
I have to agree with that and here's an example. In Lincoln City, we have the Samaritan Early Childhood Center. And we could easily, at some point in the future, have that kind of relationship as a public-private partnership with Samaritan. We already have with Neighbors for Kids, we already have partnership with Samaritan. And it may, we may have those examples right in our own town in the future, so having Neighbors for Kids in there is probably not appropriate to be school or subgeneric. So I agree with Council Gambino.
Kathy?
I thought the purpose of putting neighborhood for kids was that it was not a school and that's why we were doing that.
That's correct.
Correct.
That's correct. The issue, the issue isn't zoned, not as a school. That, that's been the, the bailiwick of the problem is it's not zoned school nor does Neighbors for Kids have the financial ability to get done what needs to be done to be designated as school. And so this was put in there to protect them. It's not saying we can't come back, although it can be difficult, come back and rework an ordinance. It's not saying we can't. But I understand that not having a reference for neighborhood for kids, you want to leave tax lot 7400, that would be fine.
I'm sorry?
Well, the tax lot 7400 is neighborhood for kids lot, neighborhood for kids ground block.
I see.
You know, and the other thing is you're right, what if Neighbors for Kids is an entity down the road and are we going to put their successors there also? It's something to consider, you're right.
Counselor?
My understanding of the, of the reason that we're enacting this ordinance in the first place is in order to get around the zoning issue by enacting an exclusionary zone in ordinance. And of course, the zoning can be changed at a later time if the facility is, or the ordinance can be as well. But that was my understanding of why we're doing it this way rather than as a zoning issue.
Go ahead, Robert.
Robert, you worked on this, right? Seems to me I haven't really seen some of the wording before. I thought, I don't remember if it was a sample ordinance or what, and it did say things generically like facilities that minors frequent.
Right. We, we had some language that was a variation of the state regulation that talks about schools, but we talked about things that primarily attended by children or minors, which, you know, we can certainly go back to something like that. The thing we've got to be careful about is.
A restaurant.
But, yeah, we, we need to be as clear as we can.
Check out the whole strip.
So, you know, we, we tried community center because NFA has a community center designation, but then when we looked at the buffer zone, I didn't see more either.
Okay. Our last meeting, we discussed this and when the legislature gets through with it in 2016, we're going to be revoting anyway. And that was my statement. We have to vote on something, let's do it. We have to change it later to satisfy the legislature, then let's do it. So all we're doing now is just having some things back and forth, the same as we were two weeks ago.
Okay.
So.
Point well taken.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, and yeah, I mean, I'm glad you brought that up. It's a temporary kind of fix to maybe save a, in case a business from relocating right next door or something that in future changes might have to move. It's to save the expense of locating a business and then having to move that business, albeit if we have to change our city ordinance to comply with the state regulations, I think that we're prepared to do that. So.
I think that was my one.
Yes. So I would agree with you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And I will, I'll let my motion stand. I was ready to withdraw if there's too much pushback on the council, but I'll let my motion stand for the, to accept the first reading.
And I'll second it.
It's a question.
All right, any more discussion? Call, Mayor.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathela?
Yes.
Okay, the vote to adopt at the first reading was unanimous to do so. So now you, the council has another decision to make. The charter also says that the second reading will occur at the very following city council meeting unless the vote to adopt at the first reading is unanimous, then the council can move to do the second reading this very same meeting. So you have that option tonight to proceed with the second reading.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we proceed with the reading of the second, the second reading of the ordinance without the text.
Sounds.
Any discussion on that? Please call.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathela?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
So we'll proceed with the second reading of ordinance number 302 and ordinance amending the ordinance 243 and ordinance providing for licensing of businesses, professions, trades and occupations for revenue purposes, adding regulations for medical marijuana facilities operating within the city of Deepwater Bay, repealing ordinance number 300 declaring a moratorium on medical marijuana facilities and declaring an emergency. And at the second reading, I would note the two titles would be corrected. Thank you, Robert. Any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? There don't appear to be any, so a motion to adopt at the second reading would be.
So I have a question for, for, to, to help me, a new council member, that's you. So this is now an ordinance?
Not yet. We're, we're, we're in the throes of the second reading and until the council adopts it at the second reading, it's not.
Okay.
Sparks?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Adopt.
Adopt, thank you. The ordinance with the corrections that Mayor has.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call please.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathela?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathela?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Right.
And the motion, the motion, the ordinance is adopted, we'll have the mayor, the mayor will sign either later tonight or tomorrow and it will be effective immediately.
Light them up.
Give me applause.
Only if he has cars.
Does this deserve?
Of course.
Anybody get any brownies?
That was an interesting meeting.
Some green ones.
That was an interesting meeting that you and I attended from Potta last week. It was very interesting.
Yeah.
A lot of good information through the county and they're, they're real thorough. They're going to make sure that there's no candy that represents like a Reese's Peanut Butter Cup. They're going to be really, really stringent on specific items.
Yes. And I might add, there were a lot of high bar people in there. It wasn't just a go listen in project.
Joe and I attended the OLCC hearing the night before and it was a well orchestrated, well run meeting. And I walked away with the impression that OLCC doesn't know what to do yet and they're trying to get, they probably do, but they're trying to get input from every player in the game. And I would say most of the people that came to that meeting were mom and pop growers. That was my impression.
It was a wide mixed variety of growers, providers, people who run the facilities, people who are thinking about opening facilities, you know, entrepreneurs, people who are thinking about opening labs. So it was, it was really a good meeting.
It was a good meeting.
Yeah, it was well worth the trip to go.
If I, is that it?
Yeah.
If I may add, there were people at this meeting that Brady and I attended that made the statement that the OLCC was trying to get out of the responsibility of controlling marijuana.
I did not get that impression.
I didn't get that impression.
No, because it was put to me directly.
Ah, okay.
So, anyway, we got, got here and we'll find out, I guess.
Yeah, there's a lot of lessons learned through Aspen, Colorado.
And the hospital thing, yeah. Oh, yeah, that was, that was a big, big number.
That was really, really good information.
Now, now we made the law.
Okay.
Let's move on. Item C, responses to city requests for proposal, RFPs, and we'll get right to city legal services.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve David Gordon as the city council for the city of Deepwater Bay.
Second.
Made the second one, any comment?
Yep.
Call please.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Absolutely.
Mathela?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll start harassing tomorrow.
No, we're not done with them yet.
Oh, we're not, that's right.
Municipal software.
Thank you, Larry.
Actually, I have a question. The city has a legal services agreement, the format that we are currently using and have used in the past, so if it's all right with the council, we'll forward that agreement to Mr. Gordon for his review and we'll, we'll negotiate the contract if he will.
Oh, yeah, we'll negotiate.
So once, you know, like I say, we'll send the existing city agreement format to Mr. Gordon and if he loves it, he'll sign it and send it back. And then it would come back to the city council for your approval and authorizing their sign and then we would enter into that agreement. So do you want to just follow that process or do you want to review the agreement before we send it to him or?
Are you talking about Spears Hoyt?
No, 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 our legal services agreement that we would negotiate with Mr. Gordon. I mean, we, we have a form of agreement that we're currently using and it's the form of agreement that we've used for quite a number of years with very little change. So if, does the council just want staff to send that form of agreement to Mr. Gordon
I hear they're not.
If, if, what, what I would do.
Mr. Counselor, go ahead.
I think if it were just, if it was sent to me.
We're gonna get a copy of that.
You're gonna get it. And it will be presented for your approval at your next meeting. That's what I, and, and I suspect there will not be any significant issues, if any.
If you have edits, though, you'll include those.
Yes. So, so I would recommend that you just have staff send me a draft form of agreement that will come back to you for your consideration at your next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we send the, the draft form agreement, Counselor, to our new council. And that, that in the form that's all that we already have.
I'll say.
Any more discussion?
No.
I thought, I thought I saw you flip.
No, I went.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathella?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
And then I'll pencil that in for the very next agenda as far as the agreement coming back.
Great. Yeah, here we're gonna spend some more money. Municipal software.
Not yet. Um, I'm happy to report that we received five proposals in response to our RFP for our municipal software. We have started the review of these proposals. And I'm asking the council for some time. Because it's, um, we want to do a very thorough and very detailed review to bring back a very good recommendation to you. So if that's all right with council, uh, we're gonna continue with our review of the proposals and work toward a recommendation to bring to you.
If I may, are you testing the actual software as well, like several different versions?
You know, um, we are not, not testing. We, we've received the proposals. So now it's a matter of reviewing the written proposals, generating questions to go back to the proposers. Um, there will be some, um, demonstrations. So yes, that's all gonna be part. So it's gonna take some time.
How much time do you think it'll take?
Um, I'm going to say at least a couple of weeks.
And is our number that you, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, you got one idea. Perry, um, now, uh, any, uh, any proposal for new, uh, new software, municipal, municipal software? It has to include, you know, hardware compatibility, so.
We're addressing those issues as well.
So what, I mean, are we going to have to, uh, what, are we on the, uh, Microsoft here or are we on the, uh, are we?
These are, we're dealing with companies that specifically provide municipal software. Utility billings, um, municipal accounting. Payroll's pretty much payable. There's nothing quirky about payroll for municipal, except we do multi-fund accounting. So we're looking at an entire package that is specific to municipal accounting in compliance with government accounting standards practices.
So is it cross-platform compatible from, uh, uh, Apple to, uh, to PC?
I'm going, no, we're, it's all Windows based.
Okay, all right. And so is it, um, is it compatible with how far back in the Windows? What version?
Well, most of the newer softwares are only gonna be compatible with at least XP. But we're wearing Windows seven Professional for the last four years and we're well in the, we're well in the, our, our equipment is in fine condition to be able to run the software.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Is, is city staff, Perry, is city staff comfortable with going through this technical evaluation? A hundred percent comfortable?
Yes.
Would you have the expertise to be able to, uh, you know, the technology expertise to be able to look at this thing the way you feel like you need to? Or do you need extra help or anything?
At this point, very comfortable. Not afraid to ask for help, but we'd find we'd like some. I will say that. But at this point, very comfortable. And let me say, we know that we won't.
Okay.
That will help a lot.
I, I have one, a follow-up question on that. I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but because I do have an information technology background, if you want, uh, someone on the sidelines that can, you can bounce things off of, I'm, I'm more than happy to be of service.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
But I don't wanna interfere.
Got your number. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay.
The software you're working on, it's called, Brady and you do a lot of job costing. You do?
Yeah.
It's not called job costing, it's keeping track of time. And this new software, it's going to have the capability for you to buy code in code projects. So that there, for instance, we had a project not that long ago. It took a little time for the staff just because it wasn't in the queue the right way. So this new software is definitely gonna job track for us.
There, I, I can't speak for all of them, but I know that, um, at least maybe, I'll ask Emma. Project management, is it in all of her proposals? I can't remember. Um, it was one of the things that we asked for and, um, the proposals have not come in in a consistent format. So finding the same pieces of information in each one is, is taking some time. So I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure that that was offered by all of the companies that responded. And I, I don't think that, usually your example of the project that we recently.
No, I'm not, I'm not balking about it. It's just I knew it took you a lot of time.
And I, and I don't think that any software is going to be able to do exactly what you wanted because it was a very specific thing, the way that we went back. It wouldn't have been coded in, to provide the information you're going to want.
Unless coded before the project.
It was, um, if we know in advance that this is a project we need to be tracking, then, then it could be absolutely coded, absolutely.
And that was just a question for the future, not?
And, and we do track things.
Well, I know you do. I just wanted to make it so it's easier for you.
Yeah.
Kathy is next.
Good.
Kathy is next.
Go, Kathy.
I just wanna say how nice that you guys get to pick what you are gonna be using. Kinda like the cook telling you how to, you know, how to vice the table or whatever.
Absolutely.
So that is really nice that you're, that is my take on it.
Why don't you jump in?
What do you mean? If I was using it, you see somebody is the one that says this is the equipment you're gonna use, learn it. So it's very nice that you get to pick what you're gonna be using.
Well, and, and we're quite lucky that we have enough experience in our office, enough familiarity with our processes, um, using the existing software, some awareness of, of what the other software can do. Um, that, that's why I say we're very confident in our capabilities to review. Um, but like I say, not afraid to ask for help, so.
Nice. I think that's great.
Uh, are we, are we able to use our fiber optics platform to extend uh, the capabilities of the system out to other locations for integrated database kind of applications and?
As far as like the treatment plans or?
Yeah, yeah. As we go into the future where we have other locations that have access to the database.
I believe so.
Of Brady might be.
We, we personally have that, like in my office, through a wireless system, um, right now. And, uh, but yeah, absolutely, we could do that. This is also gonna be, uh, be able to be integrated with the water meter reading. Or it could be downloaded. We're doing everything with a pencil now. We're like going from the Flintstones to the Jetsons. It's a matter of just installing the program.
Reason I ask that is because we need to, uh, Mr. President, uh, we need to get on with this technology advisory committee because I think about his, our new attorney's question, that his oral advice is to, for us to, uh, look ahead at these things so we don't end up spending more money in the future fixing things.
That's covered its job.
It's not a legal question, but it's still an appropriate question for technology because I've been around the block enough on this to know that you can spend a lot of money in the future if you don't cover the bases upfront. So I don't.
Well?
Oh, I just question, um, about the capabilities of software. I know that, uh, who do we use for a workplace compensation insurer?
The CIS, uh, city insurance.
Okay. Is there any, like, um, and, 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 uh, they probably ask for a breakdown of, of job descriptions each year. I mean, and to be able to rate the city, in other words, how much do you, do we have in, in secretarial or office staff?
Yes, the class codes.
Right, the class codes. So would there be, is, is the software able to track, um, the, the, the jobs that we do based upon risk? And be able to maybe reduce our insurance liability with, uh, our workplace compensation carrier based upon, um, what they do per hour? I know, look, I, I, I'm not gonna try and set you up there because there is software out there that does that, that I know. I'm just wondering what this does.
Honestly, to that specific question, I, I don't know. Um, but.
Well, what I'm saying is that they write down, they may take like, uh, uh, anybody that's associated with the sewer in, in one risk, you know, retire rate. And if we could break that down into, well, yes, but they do other things, that's not, not as risky.
If I might, we already do that
Okay.
with Excel spreadsheets. Um, is, what we report to CIS, um, we, we don't use, like, for example, in our budget. Um, for our budget every year, each job position, we look at the last three years, uh, where, on time sheets, recorded actual time worked. We look at, uh, where did they spend their time to break it out to the six funds? And so that's the budget. And that's how the pay is dispersed through the year. But time sheets are still churning in. And the way the workers' comp is tracked is based on actual hours. So what we're reporting to pay it for those class codes is based on actual, what's actually worked. Not on a, uh, estimate or, or anything. So, so we're doing that already. Um, so the software will help improve that, but it might make it easier for, for.
Well, and the question being of the software that comes to mind was for, um, construction. A big, a large construction firm. They, they wanted to reduce their insurance liability as much as possible and, and they, you know, and software.
Exactly. And that's what the city's been doing. Because our choice is, um, you can look at that job position and say the primary duty is streets. And you can report all of their wages under the streets category. Uh, or, you know, or you can do what we're doing and actually turning it based on actual hours and breaking it out. And that did, that does reduce sort of the pay per year, so.
Thank you, Bert.
Is this, uh, new technology that we're looking at, it's, uh, basically what, what we're doing is, uh, trying to make the, the time spent by city employees more valuable and what, what's the possibility of, uh, using a, a time clock situation?
I think we still have some time clocks in the basement.
No, I don't. Thanks. You may integrate a time clock into these systems, do they not?
Uh, again, I don't know specifically.
I think they do in the, yeah, but we're kinda spread out. We've had them in the past and, I think they came around when we needed to really have them. Um, but right now we seem to be in pretty good shape for them. As far as the field crew goes, the, the office staff is, is, um,
Anyway, we're going to look at every detail and we're gonna prepare our apples and oranges and bananas and bicycles. And we will bring a good recommendation back to you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bert.
Uh, Brady, uh, something on the?
Yeah, on the fuel.
Something?
You have something on, on the fuel?
Yeah, I did the research, uh, for it. And, uh, we put out a, uh, RFP for, uh, market over the drive price. Uh, we only got two responses back of the app that we, we put out and notified a lot of companies that have oil products in our area and throughout, you know, western Oregon, Portland, San Diego and stuff like that. So we got a response from Mark Nelson, um, oil products. And they're the ones that were actually recommended by, uh, a local here that looked into. And it was actually, uh, a heck of a lot more for, for the diesel and twice as much for the, uh, clear gas. So, uh, Carson, uh, at this point, really looks like our best bet. There's also an issue with, we got somewhere out of the valley that in the middle of August, middle of July, you know, they're gonna deliver diesel and we only hold so much diesel and we got tuna fishing. And they take our tank down quite quickly and we need to refuel opposed to coming from, I believe Toledo or, yeah, Toledo area is where Carson's coming out of.
Uh huh.
Opposed to, say Salem, stuck in grid block traffic at, at Spirit Mountain Casino.
That, that being said, Brady, that's quite a savings that we're looking at here. So they reestablished a, a time, uh, the weaponry time that they can stick to.
Yeah, for Carson, yeah. Um, Carson, you know, it's, it, they seem to, um, work out quite well. They got the little jumper truck to get our clear gas here. We don't have to get the big rig down here. Um, so, um, I think sticking with, uh, with Carson seems to be our best bet. They treated us well so far. We got a big rapport with the drivers and, so, yeah, timing, if we give them a heads up on timing, I think for, for tuna season, uh, a little bit better, a little more heads up, I think it'll be, uh, just fine.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, it's going, uh,
Go ahead, Joe.
This, this new, uh, uh, carbon, I forget which, yes, the Senate bill, state Senate bill that just passed. It's gonna make, make the, uh, non-ethanol fuel just really, it's gonna be, make it tougher to get, uh, at a higher price.
Yeah, the clear gas.
Yeah, it's just gonna be, uh, the boats are gonna have to eventually adapt because it just, it, it would probably more or less be non-existent.
They're, they're currently, I mean, they currently are consolidating to a facility in Vancouver, Washington. And that's the only place that you can get the clear gas in our area right now besides Seattle. And they're down to California, San Sacramento, so it's.
By the way, our, our, our local state representative, Dave Donberg, voted for it.
He voted for it.
Yeah, I know that. On the side of the safety factor, it far outweighs the cost. And I won't burn any fuel in my boat that has any ethanol in it. I just will not do it. I've had that engine quit on me. It's, it's, uh, repairs are, uh, more expensive than the extra cost of fuel. And, uh, so speaking as a fisherman and a boat owner, I won't burn anything but non-ethanol, ethanol fuel. I just will not do it. And I'm sure there's a lot of other people. But I got this thing passed before I even thought about running for mayor. I pointed out all the hazards with ethanol tainted fuel. And, uh, all you need to do is go online. You can find out all those, all those things. And, uh, and if we, if we start selling, uh, ethanol tainted fuel out of our facility and we have one death, we're in for one big lawsuit. So it's just a no-brainer. Yes, go ahead.
So do we need a motion because there was a request from the council?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we, uh, stick with Carson oil on these two RFPs.
I'll say that.
We stick with Carson oil, that leaves?
Carson, yeah.
Any more discussion?
I just, uh, one more thing on the clear gas for the, the. I just, one more thing on the clear gas, the gentleman I talked to from Carson Oil said that this consolidated company that's in Washington, I forgot his name, the company's name and the gentleman's name, but they said it's going to be pretty stable for a while. He didn't give us any timeline, but it's tentative, but we should be okay for through the summer. So we'll see. Tuna season is going to be big, but most of the tuna boats are diesel.
Call the question, please.
Olson?
Yes.
Mappola?
Yes.
D'Amico?
Yes.
Grant?
Fire.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
One to item D, Harbor Master Plan Advisory Committee Membership, expiration of funding for harbor and other infrastructure. Brady.
Mayor Madla put this item on the agenda after the last week's Harbor Master Plan Advisory Committee meeting, which was on, well, at that meeting, funding for harbor improvements was discussed, and you know Dick Johnson, he's urban renewal chair, he's a member of that committee, talked about center, urban renewal funding, let's see, and grant availability, et cetera. And in addition to that, Consulate Sparks sent via email some information that was copied for you regarding public-private partnerships, and it's quite lengthy, I don't know if any of you had a chance to look at it, and I saw a third one that I didn't get copied yet, which I will distribute copies. So Mr. Sparks has provided quite a bit of information for you to review and digest, and.
I could make some highlighted comments about this subject. And this goes back to our, Mr. Gordon is here, is that I really believe that we should put on the table all the different funding vehicles and options that we might, might be available to us in the future for funding infrastructure, including public-private partnerships. It's complex, but it's our future, and if we don't look into it right now, and we're 10 years down the road, and then we'll be sitting here saying, why didn't we do that? So it's a complex discussion that requires professional expertise, both in terms of financial analysis, the legal implications are pretty heavy on this, it's a big Obama-driven program back in Washington DC, he's been on it since day one, it's got very serious last year. Our community has a wonderful opportunity going forward. If we do this right, it's going to have big, big benefits and payoff for finding investment for our town, finding new mechanisms for financing, but there's some work involved with this, but I would say that the investment, this council should take it very seriously, and we should, we should invest in our future by making sure that we're using all the, all the financial and funding mechanisms that are available to us in the 21st century.
I agree with you, Steve. One thing we have to do is we have to identify those problems that need to be handled first, and the harbor is a number one, the new docks and piling, for example. And the, the harbor commission, as long with the harbor advisory master plan, they're, they serve the pleasure of the council. And what I'm trying to do is get these organizations to put together what needs to be addressed primarily, immediately, if you will, and then, and then go from there and try to secure our funds, whether it's either from the harbor maintenance fund, which Senators Merkley and Wyden are involved in, they're also involved in the infrastructure monies, especially Merkley, for our city silverware money. So we can get our two committees on track and get these things identified, and then go from there to figure out where we're going to find the funding from. And I really, I really feel that once we identify these things, that I'll have a more than even chance of getting some of this funding from Senators Wyden and Merkley, and also Representative Schrader, he's involved in it as well. So basically, that's why I had this put on the agenda, so we could at least think about it, get our committees going, and get some teeth in this. Because the time, you know, we're running out of time, we just, we just can't go for another year without doing something about this, it's got to be done. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Are you confident that we have the professional expertise?
Once these things are identified, then, then we're going to get some professional people to, and we already spent forty-three or forty-eight thousand on a group that's supposed to have a, what's the name of that advisory group again?
The Silver West?
The Coast?
Ocean of Seattle. Oh, Hatchmont McDonald's, Coast and Harbor. There's two, there's the same company, Hatchmont McDonald's, and then Coast and Harbor is their, their version of like marinas and ports.
Right, and they're in charge, they're in charge of putting together plausible dock systems and pilings and so on, go ahead.
I was just going to say, your list here is, is a great way to start. I think we can have all kinds of committees and meetings and talks, and that does take time, but with your list here, where you have it prioritized, like you said, you know, you've been talking about it for a long time, and to, you know, slowly check them off our list is the way to go.
Do you have the thing from the harbor that? Is that what she's got?
Yeah, that's what she answered, too.
So I, I would just say that I think we have, like you said, you have to start somewhere and start getting some things done.
Right, and that's going to go to the harbor commission next, their next meeting, and have them voice their opinion from, on which are the most immediately, or should be prioritized immediately, so, go ahead.
You know, to make this thing work and be effective, these people need to be talking. And it occurs to me that there's some jealousy, or some territorialism, or whatever, these two groups somehow need to come together. And I might be so bold as to suggest that we put the harbor advisory committee and harbor commission together in the room, shut the door, give a pizza, and let them duel it out so they can get going on this. But I really think we should put them in the same room, because this passing back and forth is taking two weeks each time. And every time we pass back and forth, there goes another month, there goes another quarter, there goes a half a year. And if we're to make the budget cycle in DC, we got to get these guys together and working together. That's my comment.
Well, I'm, I'm going to back, I'm sorry, what did I?
No, you're okay.
Well. I deal with Steve Sparks.
Am I okay? I'm very, I'm a communications guy, okay? That's where I come from. We have got to figure out a way to improve interpersonal communications and facilitate a logical, intelligent discussion among the folks that are working on this stuff down at the commission level. Some of our commissions work very well in that regard, but we're never going to get anything done from my 69 years on earth, in 50 years in the business world, if you don't have good communications, you're not going to get anything done, and we'll be here one year from now talking about the same thing. So I'm suggesting that we do what Zink is suggesting, but we also have a professional facilitator in the room who can have a whiteboard up there and get this stuff down and get it, if you put all those guys and gals in the, in the room without a facilitator, it's going to, everybody will get up and leave.
I actually think so, the council should attend that to let.
That's right.
People know at the commission level how important this is.
We've got.
This is not a passing fantasy. Their docks are failing, we have to do something, we need to get them going, so again, I'll suggest we get together.
Oh.
Joe.
Yes, Mr. President, I was on that council, and I gave a verbal resignation. Okay, last meeting. And after, but after getting to my desk at my, it's just the timing, 5:30 in the afternoon just didn't work for me, for my schedule. Of course, I was looking at a room where everybody else in the room was either retired or working for the city, okay? Not one person had a regular job, I do, okay? I've got some flexibility in my schedule, but 5:30 in the afternoon is, is really bad time for, for me, okay? But after looking at what they had come up with at the meeting that I missed, I, you know, I begged the council to take my verbal resignation back, and I'd like to continue to serve on the, on the Harbor Master Plan Committee, okay? As far as getting the two entities together, with the exception of the mayor being present, the, the master plan committee and the commission, there's no twines that would meet there, there's just no sense of, with the exception of staff being able to give some guidance to the committee, and with the exception of me being there, there's no sense of what the harbor, I mean, in my opinion, what, what, what it really needs, and what, what it's, what, what it's gone before, you know? The, the most important thing on, on the list is, is the docks, you know? And, and the mention, even the mention of this walkway and funding, it's pie in the sky, it's been discussed for years, since, you know, since I've been associated with the city, you know, the city and coming to meeting, it's about this, this funding, this futuristic walkway, it's just not realistic, and, and it's, and it's been thrown around for years, and the, all moving parts you'd have to put into place to get it done, I'd forget about it, okay? And let's concentrate on what's going to save our harbor, and that's, and that's putting new pilings and new docks in, and then go from there, some of the other things that might be an improvement. But as far as getting the commission and the, that's fine, I'll moderate, you know, I'll help out getting the, if, if the actual harbor commission is willing to, which I chair, if the council says not, I'd be happy to get, to sit down with them, with them both.
If you make it at seven o'clock, I can, because I'm like you, Jerome, I have a job, we can't make it 5:30.
Right.
All right. Dick Jocelyn is urban renewal, and he is our pathway to a lot of funding, and he's been working really hard on this. He's talking about, I've got, have you got that list of things?
I read it, I've got, I'm missing half of it right now. I was on page two.
Every, every one of the high numbers that he listed, or that was agreed on at that meeting, which you weren't here for the thing, but it, the high ones are replace docks two, three, and four, and it talks about the piling, talks about a mulli use facility that'll be in conjunction with our pumping station and our fueling station, and all those things are things that need to be addressed, and that's part of the, the requirements that we're going to have for picking up the funding to, to make these things happen. So it's there again.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, if I may, excuse me, is anybody else in the phone?
Steve's over here.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with you and the others on some of these short-term priorities, but if we just keep doing the Band-Aid thing in this town, we're going to be in trouble 10 years from now. So my suggestion for consideration is to be real serious about the short-term needs and get some funding and get that fixed, and look at it as kind of some emergency preventative maintenance or whatever, what do you want to do it, but we have to sit down and start to become strategic managers of our business here. This is a business enterprise, we need to become more strategic.
That's, that's well taken, that's what the harbor maintenance fund is all about. These, these docks and the pilings that need to be replaced are indeed the number one priority. Go ahead, Brady.
So back to the engineers that this city has hired to do the concept design of the pilings and docks, I, they've got all their information gathered and putting together their first phase, we're going to have a webinar on next Friday, not this Friday, but next Friday, with all the players, with the city, maybe the mayor can be involved, maybe Jerome from, if you can make time for that webinar. So we'll be able to discuss where they're at on the concept design, and I guess they're moving along quite quickly. So that's happening now, and so, so giving them a little push, and Brady was forwarding all those emails from you, and so we're really getting some response. So the next thing I had real quick was the harbor master plan. The master plan is actually, just like any other master plan that the city has done, we have sewer master plan, we have water master plan, we have storm sewer master plan, Harps master plan, and I think every one of those master plans, we had an RFP offer an engineering firm, an engineering firm came in that was agreed on, okay by the council, and things moved along really quick, and they put it together. They're asking the questions, we're kind of guessing, with the committee we have now, we're kind of all over the board, we're gathering the information for the engineer, but in, in all in all, I'm trying to steer that every meeting we go to, and it kind of veers off and.
Right.
That's where we got.
Well taken. We, one other thing I want to put in everybody's mind is this money again. We have $1.32 billion in that harbor maintenance fund, and 10% of it is allocated to small harbors. So we need to get on this, and, and that money is going to be there forever, you know? Go ahead.
You know, I, I still say that the harbor commission, harbor advisory committee need to break bread, need to sit together, need to face each other, need to hear what the other has to say. And with that in mind, I, I would ask staff to organize a joint meeting for both those commissions and advisory committee, put it out, let's have, let's have pizza, let's have something, let's have, let's have a reason for them to come together, and let's talk, and as many of the councils in town should come, this is serious, Steve's right, everyone on this table is right on every one of their points, but we've got a group of people that don't want to talk, let's get together and get talking with them. Do we need a motion to make that?
Well, we have grant money for this project, and.
No, I understand that, but I'm talking about getting these people together. Because they refuse to sit down and acknowledge that each one has a piece in this puzzle. We need to get past this.
Do we, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, who was that? In that grant, in that grant money, Brady, do we have the opportunity to fund a professional facilitator?
Yes, I believe so.
We, I, I gotta tell you that a professional facilitator is needed for this kind of thing. We have a serious problem. We're not going to get where you want to go, Mr. Mayor, if we don't get what Zink is talking.
talking about fixed, and if we don't start getting people to communicate effectively.
I mean, I'd like to have a critical path to say, we have to have, I'm sorry, someone else? I'm sorry, can't...
I, I'd like that. You had something written down. So Brady and Perry, do I understand on this grant, do I, I, I need, I'm trying to wrap my head around, the grant was for the Harbor Master Plan, okay? And so, and it was for 45,000?
No, 15,000.
15,000. Okay, now, the engineering company that's been hired to, to put the engineering together to...
To do the pilings and docks.
Harbor, now, the city paid for that out of our own pocket?
We, yes, well, we could apply, the, the contract is like...